All right then. I'd like to call the North Bramford Board of Education Meeting, Thursday, March 16th, 2023, to order at 7:00 p.m. Roll call?
Chairman Papalos, Vice Chair Nafra.
Here.
Secretary Ziana.
Here.
Janet Bosom.
Here.
Zachary Canada.
Here.
Kim Dawson.
Here.
Victoria Alonso. Who's the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any visitor comments? Actual visitors, okay? Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
So, um, so a lot's been going on at the high school, especially with the new high school underway too, but to start off with, MBHS seniors are scheduled to present their capstone projects on March 15th and tentatively April 5th, depending on weather. In 30-minute segments, before their final step, students submitted time sheets, general entries, and a reflective paper. Faculty members will evaluate the presentations, provide feedback using a rubric. The presentation is the culmination event aligned with career exploration. So I presented mine this Wednesday.
Yeah.
And it was, it was really rewarding to be able to talk about my experience. I spent like over 40 hours preparing everything. I made a short film. And so the, having the ability to like spend time with like, you know, teachers who are respected, like, so I had Mrs. Detor, who's like the advisor for the Honor Society, being able to tell her specifically about like what I did in making my project was impactful, I would say.
Nice.
What was your film about that you?
Um, it's about a, it's a little part of a short story by Isaac Asimov, who wrote I, Robot.
Okay.
It's about like if we lived in a world with seven suns, and then one day the solar eclipsed and everything goes dark, what we will do.
Oh.
So it was like a sci-fi thing, it was fun.
That's interesting.
Um, and then also, um, students in grade nine to 11 submitted and required elective course requests for 2023 to 2024 school year. Teachers have provided recommendations for the level of coursework based on the body work completed throughout this high school year. MBHS guidance counselors, department chairs, and administrative administration collaborate to develop sections and schedules for the upcoming year. Um, and so my, my younger brother is someone that's one of Bramford, and he's asking me for, of course, recommendations because I've taken a lot of classes in Bramford, so.
That's nice, though.
Yeah, and it's also like someone I'm like touring at the middle school, like asking like what like classes I should take, psychology, all these different things. So it's also like, it's not just like everything the administrators are doing to help prepare like since we're a course selection, it's like upperclassmen can help like underclassmen say, you should take, these are fun, these are like, some like really cool teachers who know a lot that can share.
That's great.
Steer away from the hard teachers.
But sometimes I recommend those classes.
Brotherly advice.
Yeah.
Tell, tell the truth, tell the truth.
Well, I usually recommend them because I think that like can learn a lot, like probably like there's like some teachers who grade like really hard, but like you just get the most out of that versus someone who's just like, you know, like you're there, you know? I feel like you get the most when you're challenged, so.
So when you're in college, they have this thing Rate My Professor.
Oh.
Tell the truth, is there Rate My Teacher for MBHS?
Well, I mean, in the halls, yeah.
Two months away from graduation.
I'm gonna report on a few events that I've had the pleasure of being involved in. The MBHS Dream Team participated in Read Across America events held at both elementary schools, Jerome Harrison and Totucket Valley, Jerome Harrison on March 3rd and Totucket Valley on March 15th. Mrs. LaCroy continues to lead the MBHS Dream Team and facilitates preparation for the students before, prior to the event across the district. As well as the Student Union, who has met recently to provide a forum for students, which discusses relevant and timely topics. Topics of plagiarism and the importance of academic integrity were discussed during the most recent meeting. Mr. Ryan Dabrowski and Mrs. Nicola Croy co-advised the group, and the administration attends periodically to also participate.
And then finally, the boys hockey qualified for the C I A C state tournament and traveled to Newington to compete against Weathersfield. After defeating Weathersfield, MBHS faced off against local rival East Daven High School during the tournament's second round at Bennett Rank in West Daven. So I'm a little partial to East Daven, that's where I'm from originally, so it's kind of hard, but you know.
But we did beat East Daven, so you could update that.
We did.
And we lost to North Haven last night, 1-0, and had a great, a great game and a great season, so.
And like I know like some really like good defensemanship, especially by like Aiden Geis, the goalie, I know he's like.
Yeah, he had a great game.
He's an all-star, he's like blocking everything, it's crazy.
That's a great season, congratulations to them. Thank you. Do you have anything else, Ross?
Um, Ross.
Thank you.
You'll enjoy the rest of the meeting or go home. Thank you, guys.
I have a paper to make, so.
So we're moving on to the consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the March 16th, 2023 Fourth Education Meeting as submitted. Any discussion? Did you want to say anything about the resignation?
Yeah, we do have a resignation, thank you, from Ms. Sarah Warner, who is an English teacher at the high school. She is, she has accepted a athletic director's position in Bristol, Connecticut, which is a large district and quite a responsible position. So we thank her for her time and wish her well in the many challenges of being an athletic director in a large community. So it's good for her. We already posted and we started the process of replacing. We have a very strong candidate that we're hoping to put closure on at the end of this week, so we're moving right along. Yeah, we're very fortunate.
Okay, how do we want to handle this?
I have to abstain.
You're okay, because, well, you have to abstain for both minutes, and then I think Kim has to abstain from one of the minutes, right?
Yes.
Um, yeah, roll call will be good. Vice Chair Nafra?
Yes.
Secretary Ziana?
Yes.
Janet Bosom?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Abstain.
Kim Dawson?
Abstain.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. It says we have no recognition at this time, but we, I just mentioned the hockey team and our girls basketball team won two games in the state tournament, and it's the farthest that they've advanced in several years, so congratulations to those two teams. Catherine Thompson has returned, welcome back, Mr. Thompson from attorney leave, so we're, we're thrilled and.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump in. Boy or girl?
A little boy.
What's his name?
Michael.
Congratulations.
You're very welcome.
A beautiful boy.
That goes without saying. Congratulations.
So we're all very happy that Catherine is back with us. I know Sarah will echo that.
Very happy.
Board briefs are attached, if you have any questions, administration is here this evening.
There was just a couple, just for Ms. Parker, Principal Parker, excuse me. On those school climate surveys, how interactive are you? Like we're halfway through the month, or do at the end of the month, you seeing like 50% or are you seeing 20%? Like, are you, do you see it at the end of the month?
Can I see that again?
Oh, for the student climate surveys, do you see like a lot of participation in those?
As I may know, yes.
Okay.
I think we have probably about a third, about a parent, and then probably about two-thirds of the staff. So no, it's, it's usually very well participated.
Okay, is that kind of like universal, I mean, each school does that, correct?
Yes.
At this time?
So Carter, do you want to speak to the school climate surveys?
Yeah, they're done annually, every school participates. What we do is we collect their standard questions to kind of check in on how things are going from the student, the family perspective and the staff perspective. Universal questions across all the schools, all the schools give it out at the same time. I think the participation rate varies. Elementary typically you get a higher parent, family response than you do at the secondary level. I think the staff participation is pretty consistent across the buildings, and the other levels, they also, they survey the students as well to get their respective words on Jerome, that's kind of it.
Okay, kind of figured, okay, that's good. They're all the same questions, he said?
Yeah, there's still variation. Each administrator can ask some specific questions for their building, but then there are standard questions, the national school climate standards.
All right, that's good.
Schools are very busy. I'd love to see the kids dressed up for the two Read Across America days.
Yeah, they had a poll.
The one for T D E S, Joe, this, this last bullet point, the Women's and Family Center of Merida, do they, is that a free of charge or is that a cop who pays for that?
Yeah, free of charge, they volunteer their time. The lessons they have been facilitating with our students are interactive, they are aligned towards supplement, our second step for them, our social, emotional part of curriculum. The lessons that our mental health team goes into the bushes and the classrooms and works with the students and teachers. The lessons of the family center have been focused more on conflict negotiation skills, putting in some bystander activities, bullying, problem solving, things of that nature. And on the grade level, our mental health team selected three lessons that were specific for each grade level, so we'll allow to make sure that they're age appropriate and the kids were ready for that.
Is there like a, do they just go five, five visits, or is it just throughout the year?
So we schedule three visits, so each grade has received a lesson so far in the month of February and March, and then they'll have their third lesson in April.
Thank you. I'm not trying to hog this time. Okay, sorry. Oh, for the intermediate school, when we go to DC, there's supervision outside of, like there's what, teachers, like what kind of chaperones are we talking about? Is there?
Is it teachers and parents?
Parents and parents?
Combination, mostly teachers, I would say, two to one ratio, teacher to parent. Kids are gonna be divided into groups of eight students per adult. We're gonna have armed security at night in the hotel.
Per adult? So eight, roughly eight per adult, sorry, you said roughly eight equal on ratios?
Yes, eight students assigned to one adult.
Would it ever be a circumstance where a parent is that key person out of the gate?
For the parents who are going, the way the blueprint is right now, if a parent is with a group, there will be two parents, the group of eight, so that'll actually be four to one. Not gonna have a parent by themselves.
Right, maybe we don't have to do background checks if we don't?
We will do background checks.
Okay, we do. Okay, that's, I didn't know if that meant one or two would negate that or not.
No, everyone that goes is gonna go get the background checked.
That's good.
And administrators go, be online, come night to.
I'll be there. I'll be there, Jen, that's so, the students will be there.
Sounds like, I didn't get an opportunity to go back then, so.
Still look at your chaperones.
Well, yeah.
Jump on.
We gotta wait.
I love you, Dan.
All right, there, thank you.
Are we good? Administrator reports, any, any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna turn the next two items over to Martha, Finance, and Food Service Update.
Okay, so you have a financial report in front of you. We continue to research additional programs within the Human Resource Payroll Module. Our next training is actually scheduled for next week, but in the meantime, we're trying to figure out how the changes, the possible changes in process would impact not only our decisions and the, and the process that, that we use, but what effect there would be on the employees, if any, and our administrators who use the information in different ways that we do. In regard to the general fund, you have the Excel version of the MUNIS report attached. Just want to reiterate again that we, we depend on the accuracy of the open purchase orders for the projected balance of June 30th. Right now, just as it stands, and there will be more requisitions, I just approved more actually before I came to the meeting, we're looking at an anticipated balance of $834,000, but again, I do anticipate that to go down as the administrators continue to buy the supplies that they need. For health insurance, you can see that we're currently still showing a deficit of a little over $400,000, but each month we add the employees' contributions to that, so we are anticipating an additional $400,000 in contributions, but we also have another medical buyout payment that will be paid to the employees that participate at the beginning of June, and we're estimating that to be $88,000, or $85,000, I'm sorry, which would leave us a projected balance of a negative 88 in that one line. But again, with different staff coming on and off and things like that, that number is fluid, so we'll see where that ends up. There is a difference in the severance line, which is Object 229. To date, we have received notice for five, I believe, teachers that will retire at the end of this fiscal year. Two of those teachers are eligible for the severance payout, and it averages around $30,000, $38,000 a piece, so I have anticipated that expenditure there as well, which would bring that anticipated negative up to $171,000 for that one account. So that is a, that is a very real number, and we will do budget transfers as we get closer to the end of the year to cover that. And we continue to watch gas and oil and electricity and all, and the other utilities because of their volatility. Just a note, on June 1st, the Connecticut minimum wage will increase to $15 an hour, so that will have an effect on our greeters and on our paraprofessionals that are on the first step. So currently, pairs who come in at the bottom step of $1479 will need to be brought up to $15 an hour for June 1st in order to comply with minimum wage.
I thought we took care of that when we negotiated the last contract, I guess not.
And then, in January of 2024, our minimum wage is gonna be indexed to the Employment Cost Index by the Connecticut, the U.S. Department of Labor, so there might be another increase again in January, but as of right now, I don't know what that will be. So it's possible that our paraprofessionals will be affected again, because as of July 1st, the first rate for the pairs, step one, I believe goes to 1509, so there could be a potential for another change for them as well.
Well, we have to negotiate the contract again anyways, so.
The one for?
Yeah, we have one, one more year with the paraprofessionals, their contract ends June of 24.
Just one thing on that, was it line 411 with water?
Uh huh.
Does that have anything to do with the high school being, are we using our water supply?
Well, there's an encumbrance there of $15,000, so it could be that we're overencumbered a little bit, but I would have to take a look at it in more detail to tell you exactly where that overage is coming from.
Right.
It could be a little piece from each of the buildings, it could be one building.
I think it's coming from like.
Usually it's, it's the, it's the fields, when we do fields.
They took the water from the old high school.
Right.
I just have a question on 231 O P E, what does that stand for?
Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Okay.
So that is the, we are required by Connecticut statute to offer health insurance to any of our teachers who retire that are not yet eligible for Medicare?
Yeah.
And that's, that's the line that those expenditures get charged.
Food Service Update.
Food Service. So I was very happy yesterday because I received an email from the state that my RFP, my completed RFP, was approved by the state, so this is it. This will be public as of March 20th, so Monday. It will be advertised in the New Haven Register, the Hartford Current, Connecticut Source, our school website, the town website, and I'm also emailing this packet to 16 separate vendors. I was given the names by the state, and they will each receive their own individual packet. We will have a mandatory meeting on March 30th at 9 o'clock, we're gonna start at Totucket, and if a vendor is interested in submitting a proposal, they are required to come to this meeting. So essentially, we're just gonna brief them on what we're doing and why we're doing it, and then we will tour all of the cafeterias in the district, we'll start at Totucket, we'll go over to Jerome, we'll go to Intermediate School, and then we will end with the new cafeteria at the new high school. And bids are due May 3rd, if I remember correctly, and then we should have about a week to go through all of the proposals. We will assemble a team, and we have to score the proposals by a, a scoring grid that we developed. Different criteria is weighted differently, and then we will make a decision on a suggestion to you as far as what we think would be the best outcome, and then from there, you'll make that decision and we'll go forward.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work, Martha.
It was, it was a lot, but it was very interesting, and I actually learned a lot in the process, so.
That's good.
I'm glad it's done, but it was, it was an exercise for sure.
Thank you.
Somewhere in there, is it talk about requirement for like dairy-free, gluten-free, other allergen requirements, since like that, that these vendors would have to uphold?
There is a request that the vendor would supply a electronic application so that parents would be able to look up nutritional values of the meals, what the ingredients were, and then I believe if there's dietary restrictions, the cafeteria manager of that school would work directly with the parent on those things.
Any other questions on that?
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Carter, Curriculum Instruction Strategic Planning.
All right, I think you might have to ask, I don't know if you have a copy, do you have the instructional vision?
I have it.
They don't have it.
So do you want to come up then?
I don't know. I mean, having a copy, it's gonna be difficult, but I can give it an overview.
And walk them just an overview of it?
Yep. So really, the instructional vision for the district comes out of the idea of trying to align our efforts across the schools so that we're all working toward the same definition of what good instruction looks like across our classrooms. So this is something that was built over time, leading up till now, the PDEC committee had a lot of input into it, administrators did, and the whole staff across the district. And really what it boils down to, there are three main areas that the focus is, and making thinking visible, which you've heard about continuously, I know, is the core part of that, building a thinking culture in classrooms. The tenants of having collaboration and reflection be a part of what instruction looks like, K through 12. And then in that climate piece, making sure that there's attention to care and trust built in there. So the way that this document is, you have one front page that's supposed to be a framework, easily understandable, brief description of what it looks like, so anyone could pick that up and kind of say, okay, this is what we're working toward. And then you have a detailed description of what those practices look like, so what is making thinking visible, so a teacher or a parent, student can look at that and understand it. The same is true of what is collaboration and reflection look like in practice, and what is care and trust really look like, and what are we trying to move towards. And then the last piece of the document is a really clear connection of that instructional vision to the vision of the graduate, the sort of rubrics at the high school and what we're working toward with all of our students. So making those clear connections for all of our staff and students, and again, this is something that, it's a dual fold, it's what we're doing with kids, but it's also what we want our adults to model and practice as well, so those values of collaboration, reflection, and making your thinking visible. So that's kind of where we are. Professional development over the coming, you know, next couple of months and into next year is going to have a piece where district-wide, we're gonna focus on elements of that vision so that the staff feels really clear and supported in that, and buildings are already doing some of this work as we speak, so we'll just continue to work toward that. And then we will try to survey all of our stakeholders with how we're doing in those areas. That's kind of the overview, so I'll make sure that you get a copy of the document, and then if you have questions on it, you can feed them to me.
We'll send it electronically tomorrow to everyone, and then we can put it back on if you have, for questions next, next month.
At Harvard University Project Zero, I saw it come up a couple of times, what's, like what's?
It's a whole thing behind that.
Yeah, like what's the appeal, what are they doing that, I'm sure they're doing great things.
Yeah, so Project Zero is really, it's a lab site, working with schools, it's very much, you know, in practice, what are some of these approaches that we use? Making thinking visible comes out of a couple of researchers from Harvard University, and again, that's the approach where it's really thoughtfully designed, that kids are showing their thought process, the way their thinking changes, and then as teachers, we build in opportunities for kids to do that through our instruction. We talk about gallery walks, sometimes we talk about the level of questioning is getting to that, we talk about lots of different practices, there are thinking routines that we're having teachers try, that there's also a link on this document when you get it, that you can click right into what do those thinking routines look like that help build these habits. So the two researchers there, Runraker really being the big one, has looked at this over time, has studied it throughout the world, not just in the U.S., and has found it to be a really high leverage practice for, you know, student achievements at the grade level the kid is in there, but also building the lifelong habits to continue to foster deep learning and appreciation for, you know.
Is that, sorry, is that something that the universities practice as well? Like, go from late, walk out at 12th grade now, they get into, after that, higher ed is far behind public ed in terms of the practices. Harvard obviously believes in that and is practicing it in a lot of the ways that they teach, but I think if I had to characterize it generally, I think higher ed is a little bit more upscale in practices where it's more lecture-based and not as interactive. Right, that's kind of what, that's interesting, so when they get out of here, they're gonna be kind of put in a classroom where they're gonna.
Maybe.
Perhaps.
Right, but, and that's not a problem, I'm sure there are some places in some universities and some departments and some professors that are doing this and doing it well, you know, but I just don't think it's, it's wholesale yet.
Okay. Let's continue on, just before you go, Art, Carter? Not dismissed. Update on our manufacturing visit in Bramford that we're gonna, we're gonna attend. There's, there's really not much to report on for the, the building and where we're at financially with that, obviously, because our focus right now is getting into the new high school, and then we'll transition more, but we're still going out and doing PDs, so we will both be attending in May, Carter?
Yes, the 1st. The company is called, I don't wanna get this right, Bausch and Strobel, it's in Bramford, it's a brand new facility, a huge state-of-the-art facility, it's manufacturing, it's a lot of different production, and high-tech, new technology built in. So actually, the connection came up, Sam, maybe you have a plug there, put me in contact with this company through Sam's work with the capstone at the high school. And the kind of networking person at this company has reached out and wanting to partner with us as a local school, of kind of letting us come into the building and kind of look at what they're doing, so this grand opening, they've invited Scott. So this grand opening, they've invited Scott and myself to come in and kind of tour the facility, look at it. A lot of other people, you know, dignitaries and such from around the area will be doing the same, but it's a connection that we'd like to continue as we explore that advanced manufacturing potential for our students. It could be a site where students go to learn and do some of that internship that we talked about with the program. So it's a really nice partnership and a great opportunity, and it's right down the road in Branford. So we're excited.
Fortunately, they outgrew their space in the industrial park and...
Wow.
It's about 139?
Yeah, it's the best of the gray.
New building. So I met a couple of the management people there, German-based company, and they were excited about getting involved with us and kind of assisting us in this process, so we're hoping that this will be a very productive way to, you know, start kickstarting some of our efforts.
That's good news.
Yeah. Nice connection.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any questions for Carter? All right. Dismissed. Okay, town manager pending request. We are going to, I spoke with Mr. Downs yesterday regarding the roofing project here on this building, and it was important and critical for the vendor to realize that we operate two classrooms at the end of the building, plus we have 17 employees here, aside from park and rec and seniors, and that when they start to do the re-roofing and the rip, we cannot be underneath the area that they're working. So we strongly encourage them to work around April break, when our little ones are not here, and then we can adjust and move strategically as they move down the building. So Silk Town is the contractor that won the bid, and we're hoping that that's going to align that weather works that week of our April break, that they have their supplies that they need, so it's no different than any other project. We're waiting on, you know, the supply chain and everything to get started, but they're certainly aware of our concerns, and they've been pretty good about it so far. It'll probably take just under two months to complete the project. By the time they do the setup, the site work, we're going to lose our parking routine or our pickup routine over here. We're going to go back to the old way at TBS until they clear that side parking lot. We'll keep all of the kids away from all of that, the fence line, the storage, and it's going to start hopefully April break, that's what we're hoping for.
We have color on here, is that going to be an issue?
You just won't be running through here. If it's out back, it won't impact you at all, but here, that parking lot will be shut down from, you know, the start of April break on. We'll still have all of our parking, but that side parking lot will not be accessible for park and rec seniors or for our building.
There's a lot of projects going on in town.
They bring cranes in for that? To pick things off?
I don't know if they're bringing crane, they were going to crane in?
To pick anything?
For the roof?
Yeah. No, like, correct. Got it. Oh, wow, yeah. Yeah, they chuckle in pretty, get a wall all the way around. So they, someone's doing any cranes.
All right. So that's the update on the roof. Renovation project, I was in the building today, there were a few punch list items that were high priority that I've been involved with. The front glass on the windows, we replaced that today.
Oh, good.
With the one inch requested until the other ones come in, so that was a strong concern. That's checked off the box. We're waiting on the update from Gilbane on the motor for the ventilation system. They recommended something that John and I had discussions about with Rusty, and I know the committee's on board, that it doesn't really fit what we're looking to do because of the long-term potential for it failing and then having to replace the unit. So we're going in the right direction. I don't think it's going to slow us down getting in after that April break, but we're really getting close to a few items that we're holding out on, and then we'd be good to go. We're looking at the week of April break prior to running shortened days. I should probably have a motion that if we are going to do that, that the week prior to April vacation, that's a one day through Friday, Mr. Steffler?
It's 30th, which is a Thursday, and March 31st is a Friday, Monday the 3rd, Tuesday the 4th, and the 5th is already a shortened day.
Okay.
So it's Thursday, we want to keep a full day to do orientation with the kids.
March 30th through what?
April 4th.
So we need a motion to give the superintendent the authority to run shortened days from March 30th to April 4th, pending the completion of punch list items for an OTC.
Do you want to just say so moved?
Yeah, so moved.
With the condition that the punch list is completed.
So Jana?
So we'll know that punch list being completed most likely by, I mean, the current project is...
We should know next week.
About the 3rd, at the latest. Or, no, sorry, the 20th, or the maybe the 27th.
Right, within the next two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
Right. And we're, listen, we're beyond flexible with, if it gets kicked a week, we're fine. We're not going to.
Hopefully not.
We want to get in.
The way it's timed up, it's pretty nice if it works, so, because you got the...
Yeah, it's what we've been talking about for quite some time, so.
That's a move.
Yeah, Jana? You want a second hit?
I'll say.
So Jana made the motion, does that second hit?
Did you get all that?
I think Mary did. You got it, right, Mary?
Okay, listen.
Any further discussion on that?
When's the capstones? Does that fall in that time period? Like, is that going to be okay?
The 30th is the 5th, so if that happens, we have a backup date in the second, around half day in May, we also could use the first half day in May.
Okay.
We've had a discussion already about capstone coordination. I'm on standby to do that.
Awesome.
So we stay away from SATs, where we're beyond the SAT day, and we'll work to satisfy, you know, the capstone. We're still, we're really trying to thread the needle here, and it's, we're getting close.
That would be nice. Karen, all in favor, whatever you want to do.
Whatever you want.
Do, you can do it all in favor. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
And we go on to the committee report.
You okay?
Negotiations, no report. Budget and operations, we took care of, we took care of pension, no meeting. Policy, no meeting, Jana?
Policy, we have a date coming up, the 28th, is it?
Of March?
I think it's March 28th.
22nd.
22nd. Oh, next week, wow, that's already next week. Yes. So we are meeting next, next week.
Okay. ACES, we had a meeting on March 9th. I don't know if anyone watched the Super Bowl, but there was, if anyone saw the ACES commercial in there, I...
Yes.
As of, oh my God. So we talked about that, and after that, they actually went up to an applications board for their magnet school, so it was successful. Yes, the commercial was already made, so they didn't make a commercial, and obviously they don't pay the rate that Pepsi or Coke pays, so, but it was successful, so it was kind of cool to see it. We had a budget presentation for 12, 12 budget proposals. One was for Mill Road, one for sales, Whitney North Transportation, Network Services, Education Technology, Executive Director's Budget, Assistant Executive Director's Budget, Deputy Executive Director's Budget, Governing Board, Fiscal Services, and Human Resources. So all those budgets were reviewed and approved. They had a career fair that they felt was successful to try to get, they're having, like, everyone else, they're having trouble getting employees in, because there's a lot of openings, so they had a successful career fair, so they were happy with that, and that's about it. Thank you.
I think we helped pay for the ACES commercial.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure you did. We did.
We didn't pay Super Bowl rates, but we...
Yes, I hope we didn't, yeah. And we have next budget meeting, we'll have a, next meeting, we'll have a ton more budgets to go over, so.
Budgets, they're so fun.
Yeah, and ACES has a lot of different schools and a lot of different budgets to review, so.
Well, thank you for doing that, Jana. Hey, is there any new business? Because we covered building committee and communication, no meeting.
Just one note on that building committee. On that motion, was there a note later than date for them, like, for that motion? We include that in there for you to get, you know, because if they don't have all their stuff squared away?
If we're not ready to go, then we'll come back to the board and do a different timeframe for it.
Fair enough.
But we won't have another meeting then?
Yeah, I mean, we're not scheduled until, it would be obviously the main, or April, it would be the late April meeting.
Right, but that's after.
It's after the move, which isn't, I mean...
The Department of Project Committee kind of has a reins on, thumbs up, thumbs down, we're just keeping off the authority to have half-days if I'm mistaken, right?
Right.
In the event that they cover all their bases. Does that make sense?
If you were just with the flexibility of moving these dates at the superintendent's discretion.
Yeah.
With the ability to move these dates at the superintendent's discretion.
Do we have to redo it then? We don't have to redo it, just make a second motion. Should we need to change those dates? We leave it up to the superintendent's discretion, somebody want to move that motion?
So moved.
Say. Fair enough.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it was Jana and Zach?
Mm-hmm, Jana and Zach.
I'm writing the notes down, I'm going to do something.
Yeah, no, that was good, no, that was a good point. That was a good point.
Everyone really, really, really wants to get in.
I know. Yes.
Architect, builder, committee, superintendent, administrators, students, everyone, so.
Be nice if they had a little time to spend on a new building.
Yes, yes.
So, cross our fingers.
Yep, it's going to happen.
Oh, for the new business, Bennett came home super excited today. The Historical Society, Mary Ann Dela, came in to talk to them about the little red school house. He came home, his first thing he said off the bus was, "Guess what?" So that was successful, so.
It's a good thing that Ms. Dela retired, because I don't know how she would rebuild and reconstruct the little red schoolhouse if she was still teaching.
She's going to be out there with a hammer, donate herself.
We ran into her this morning, and they're laughing at the back from Jerome, and she's everywhere, which is a blessing, so.
So he told me there was no bathroom, and, you know, he had some very good details. That he was horrified at.
I joke, but it really is exciting that, you know, this piece of North Branford's history is alive again, you know, part of not only learning about it, but being a part of restoring it, and, you know, we did the videography of it, it's all good. So these, speaking of historical houses, the sign for the Augur House was supposed to be here tonight, and I was going to show it off too, but it didn't show up, so. I'll call, I won't name the venue, but I'll call them tomorrow, I'm sure I'll have it. We're putting the final paint coatings onto the Wishewell.
The Wishewell looked great.
Yes, it was great, it looked very nice.
So the sign will hang in the middle.
Kids did a great job. What color are you painting it?
It's white, and then the sign will be the purple, and, you know, obviously, it'll look like the school closet addresses on there. And then Mr. Florio, Florio will anchor it and provide lighting for it, so at night when you go by...
That's great.
It'll be lit up.
Very cool.
Mr. Florio fixed the water today at the Augur House. We had a, a brief disruption to the water, but. John, you look very nice tonight. I'm not used to seeing you out of your work, you know. You're usually inside of a furnace or on top of a roof, and you're... That was a compliment.
I'm Cameron. I need to know how much we appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Any other new business? Visitors impressed, anything?
Nope.
Go to the board?
I had gone to two things at the schools this past month, and did a pasta dinner at Totucket, which is really nice to get back to these traditional things that the schools have done and the kids can enjoy it, because this hasn't been done while these different creators were in school, so at Totucket yet. So they got to, like, work little jobs, and it was the most adorable, sweetest thing, and they had a blast. And then at Jerome, we did the sweetheart dance, and this is the first time since pre-COVID that these, and I'll say the nicest thing to see was parents being able to get together and start forming relationships, because like, all these kindergarten parents haven't had a chance to meet, and it's nice to see parents along with kids making friends at these events, so I'm excited to get back into our place.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? Then the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 20th, 2023. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Saturday, everybody.
Yes, happy Saturday.